Good evening, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to our first and second reading of our budget session. Ms. Vicki, roll call, please, when you're ready.
Yes. Councilmember Bozick?
Here.
Councilmember Reavis?
Here.
Councilmember Conover?
Here.
Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Jessen?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
And Councilmember Witten?
Here.
Six present.
I'd like to say a word to Andy before we roll into these. I wasn't at the first thing, I apologize, and I went into the conversation.
And it went slow.
It went very slowly, but quick, quick! I believe. But I know you guys talked about the proposed increases and how much that would increase our current general fund budget, even with out raises and that. So the proposals as presented exceed what we can increase, so we're going to have to be looking to look the true eye at those, and I know you all agree because we've all had conversations at times about that. I also wanted to kind of give us a little idea about the investments, because as you know, we kind of track those as we go along. And Mike and I have actually talked about this along the way, and I wanted to kind of make everybody aware of this. So they're coming to see us on Monday. I wanted to kind of give us, since we're going into the budgets tonight, a preliminary sneak peek at that. So as a comparative study, in 2016, we made about 6.2 million on our investments. In 2017, we actually had a bumper crop year, and we had an 11% at $6.7 million return on our investments. Now, and the reason I want to say this is that they gave us our kind of our blow-by-blow when they were in to see us at Capital Cities last time, and I was really quite concerned because by the end of July, we weren't looking so good. We had a very good August, or decent August comparatively speaking, and we've had a pretty good September. So as of yesterday, actually, year-to-date, we've got about a 2.2% return on our money. Now, there's a lot of what-ifs for the rest of the year. I suppose if we didn't have some weird market correction, it's possible we could pick up some increase to that. But our mark, as you all recall, is 4.5 million, which is how much we have budgeted for operations, and we all know what those things are for. We've got the social services, opportunity enterprises, accounts on aging. Those guys are in there, but we also have the 911. And we've got the jail medical, and I wanted to refresh everybody's memory why those are in there. As you may recall, last year, when we floated the bond for the capital projects, the bond was leveraged or secured by CDIT. So we thought it was appropriate to move the bond payment into the CDIT funds, and since there's just not an endless supply of CDIT money, at that time, we made the decision to move two things out of CDIT into our foundation budget that would pretty much, close to dollar per dollar, offset the bond payment. So that's when we moved the jail medical over, that's when we moved the 911 over. Also, we know in our hospital foundation, I should say foundation, we have, just shy of a million dollars allocated for insurance. So that's in there as well. But our mark's 4.5. We don't know if we're going to get there. It's possible. Included in that year-to-date 2.2 return is a bond that's being retired for $600,000 or bonds. So there won't be any extra money from that, is what I'm saying. So if we have an okay October, November, December, who knows? We might be able to hit our $4.5 million mark. Right now, we're hovering somewhere around $3 million. So it may be that this year, we are looking to our foundation holding fund to shore up our foundation budget for purposes of operations. We've got enough in there to get us through a couple of years of rough sledding. We got close to $8 million in there, I think. But our goal, our mark, was to get somewhere around $13 million in there. We agreed that we wanted to have three years of operations in our holdings. So hopefully, we don't have to do that, but if we do, we do. So, and also, one other thought I had is I, you know, we've heard lots of talk, and I know all of us have had conversations here publicly and privately about how to deal with longevity. I met with the auditor today, and I know several of the others have talked to her about this, with our budgeting for longevity. So we know that we've got about $150,000 available after the drug unit funding from the Riverboat, our casino funds. That's going to put us about $250,000 shy of a load. So as we're looking to, through this budget session, budget for longevity, we're looking for $250,000. So with that in mind, I just wanted to kind of update everybody on what I was thinking and what I'd found, and let's go get them, Saturday hunting.
Your plan is to add longevity to the budget.
I think we should.
Wonderful idea.
I think we should, and I think we should try to do that this year.
You know, we do have, in hospital interest, what's left, that's $600,000.
There is money.
$70,000, I think.
We could lift it up.
Just a thought.
Yeah, last time we checked, it was around $600,000 to $700,000 excluding what we still have to pay out of that bond.
Okay. And I would like to try to hold that, I'd like to try to hold the line on that money for lots and lots of reasons. Because, yeah, as a question, I kind of counted that into our rollover, for lack of a better term. If we could avoid going to that, well, that would give us a little more comfort. The point about this is I don't think that we have, once again, this isn't the year to be fiscally free and easy with the money. I think we need to still have the hold-the-line mentality, you know, and understand, and we've got a couple of other things being interpolated into the budget numbers, and I think we need to be cognizant of that as we roll through this and try to get all that stuff addressed. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Witten. Anyone else have anything? All right, starting up this evening, we changed the schedule around a little bit. We're going to start off with the Health Department, please. You guys want to come on up?
Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Everybody's healthy?
Yeah.
Knock on wood. All right. Let me make sure you have the right one on. Where is it?
Right in front.
Well, that's a very fine place to start.
No, it's the...
All right. I'm with you. Let's roll.
All right. So, did you guys want to go line by line, or how did you guys want to handle this?
You mean, what kind of increases? Yeah, sorry about the increases.
Okay. Looks like we start off with hourly. It's going up from $55,000 to $75,000, $20,000 increase.
Welcome to the page, Dan. All right, I got you.
So you guys want to tell us what's going on with that?
Well, my understanding is that pretty much what happens during, towards the end of the year, that's when we start, you see, we utilize a lot of funds for part-time staff, you know, where there's clerical, nursing staff, food staff, and a lot of times what happens towards the end, we run out of funds and we run out of staff. So to continue maintaining the department and to allow it to function properly, we feel that we need to allocate some money in there so that we can continue to staff the department.
Does anyone have any questions?
Is that what we're seeing so far this year? I mean, where does that account currently?
Yeah, what's the year-to-date usage of that fund, and how are we doing from last year, what was used?
That fund is pretty much wiped out. We actually have, we put money in yearly in the grant funds that we have. We try to allocate, we have free funding for part-time, and like Lenny said, we do have part-time nurses, part-time secretaries, the food inspectors and the food inspector clericals to help them with all the paperwork they have. So we actually pull from those three funds. So we use a fund at a time, so that one actually is exhausted. The one of the, it's either, one of the grant funds is exhausted almost. I think there's like $12,000 and change, and there's one that hasn't been touched for the balance of the year. So we're trying to be really careful and not have to go back, but...
How's the health budget? I mean, how's their budget looking now? I mean, how are we doing?
Their budget is, if we're looking at how far, how much we're spending, if you look at the column that says 2018 expend?
Right.
And then the 2018 adapted is right next to it.
Well, I ask this question, it's not necessarily just for our benefit.
I kind of want folks in the room to know what I'm asking.
So I have a quick question. So at one point, I received a call from a member of the Health Board, and there was some talk of taking away or allocating a position that's currently budgeted for a nurse and making it into something else.
Correct.
And then I heard that maybe that isn't the plan.
Well, okay, let me explain that.
Yeah, please do.
Is that, we have a lot of issues sometimes with this food establishment. We have food establishment managers, owners, workers, that unfortunately don't understand the food code. But we have food inspectors. Their job is to inspect, and they try to educate while they're out there, but they don't have a lot of time. And so my idea, that I borrowed from the state, was to create a liaison position and to use part-time funds from that nursing position to pay for that salary in hopes that this person not only will serve a liaison to be out there to educate the restaurants, the owners, to be pretty much like on call if somebody needs them, to help them out with the restaurants, because a lot of times we find a lot of issues.
Right.
And, but also to bring clientele back to the Health Department. We have a lot of competition. We have a lot of competition with CVS, Walgreens, North Shore, and we're losing some clients there, and we need to bring them back to the Health Department. And my goal is to have this individual be able to bring those clients back by doing PR for us, going out there and promoting the Health Department.
So let me ask you this. That's not in your proposed budget now, right?
No, no, no.
That's to come? Has your Health, because I think that has to come out of your Health Board, right? The Health Department Board?
Well, yes, and as a matter of fact, it was proposed to them, and it was tabled because they wanted more information as to the job description, which I already gave to our attorney for reviewing.
Gotcha. Okay, that answers my question for now.
I have a question, and it's, that's why I think it's helpful to have this 2017 information up here. As we look at what the budget was in '17 versus the spend in '17, is there, is there an easy way to explain why the hourly would be, it was 35 in '17, and then it looks like it's going to be, I'm not quite sure how high it is in '18, and of course, that's why you're budgeting for that much more in '19. So what is the difference between last year and this year relative to hourly?
Well, for one is that we were not fully staffed with, especially the Foods Division. We were so understaffed that it was hard to get the people out there to do all the inspections for all the restaurants. It seems like everywhere you look, there's a new restaurant coming up, not to mention everybody wants to own a food truck. And so it was hard to, we didn't have the staff.
I don't want to own a food truck.
Pardon?
Not everyone, I'm not interested in a food truck.
Oh, wait till you find out how much you'll make, then you can change your mind.
I'm making, I'm keeping the rent payments going.
Okay. But in reality, that's what's going on. We haven't, everybody is proposing, trying to get a food truck, and so we didn't have the staff. We finally now are fully staffed in the Foods Division, so we have the staff to get out there to do all the inspections they need to do.
And the number of inspections and the number of permits, it's all skyrocketed, and you have numbers of that increase.
We have, I believe it's about 800 permitted establishments. That's not even really looking at the part-time, we have part-time permits, we have temporary permits. We have, for instance, somebody just wants to do an event for one day, that's a specialty event. So all that is money that's being generated, bringing in.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as proposed.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Are there any other questions, comments?
The only other question I had was regarding the legal, which shows $30,000 roughly, and just kind of for informational purposes, if you'd explain to me what, where does that money go for legal?
That would be, that would be for our attorney. We have a contract with him. We pay a fixed fee, and then there is an hourly as well that he's paid for all the hours he does work for the Health Department.
And what type, can you give me just an idea of what he does most of the time, what his duties are?
Well, for instance, he saves the costs.
No.
Actually, for instance, we have sometimes cases that, when you have an establishment, they have about two or three times that they have a significant amount of violations, and we're talking critical violations. After the second time, they come before the Health Administrator. I kind of give them a talk to let them know that you need to straighten up, otherwise then they go before the Health, Dr. Stamper, Health Officer. At that point, she makes the decision to close them down or to hopefully scare them into place. But Hollenbeck actually is the one that advises us on what we can do legally and keep us out of trouble.
And that's attorney Hollenbeck you're talking about?
Yes.
There are also medical things that come into us, and people want, you know, attorneys, darn them, you know, they want to require some information for, do you have this patient? We want this piece of information, or it's a Medicaid case, and a CASA work or something. But we always run those, you know, the legal pieces through Dave, like that, he could...
I don't even say good morning without my attorney present.
There you go. And that's...
Your wife's hand.
And if I may interject also, that budget amount has not changed. We have, he has renewed his contract with us all of these years to the Health Department without any agreements, as a servant.
As $30,000.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any further questions or comments?
Where do I go?
You wish you had a law degree, don't you, so?
No.
Yeah, why not? Just stay on. Okay. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right. All those opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. All right, next up, we've got the anti-abuse.
Okay, anti-abuse fund is, it's a user fee-driven fund, so everything you see there is...
Soft the fee.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
For the first and second, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Okay, next up, local health maintenance.
The two that you're going to be coming up, the 1168 and the 1206 are both our grant funds that we've written for many years.
I'll make a motion to approve both the local health maintenance and the health, all those letters, tobacco fund, 1206.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you for that.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
And as soon as you, I mean, when your Health Board decides this business of the nurse, and the reason I ask this is because we have had, over the years, you know, been approached because of shortage of nurses. So just kind of let us know, because I kind of like to see those things. Thanks.
You guys have a nice evening.
Thank you.
All right.
Next up this evening, we have our Public Defender's Office.
I don't know which one's the list altogether. PD supplemental?
No, it's the... Good evening. It's the General Fund. Good evening, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Gentlemen, you too, Elwin.
Thank you. Dan. That's my Witten.
So we do know where the Public Defender's Department, everything all right?
Business is good.
That's good. Congratulations.
Legal services.
So there's been one increase, if I could address that in the general fund budget, that's $10,000 for legal services. That is when we need to hire outside of our staff because of conflicts. We had two pretty large appeals this year that basically broke that account. We had to come back for additional appropriations. You'll note that it is zero in this year's budget. Up until about 2015, it was $10,000. I think Councilman Biggs at the time, trying to make some cuts, asked that we remove it and then come to you. Well, we've needed it every year, so I think we're showing that there's certainly a need there. Other than that, everything is flat.
Where has that been showing up in the last two years?
In the PD supplemental fund.
And how much has it been each year, do you know?
I believe we spent $17,000 or $18,000 this year.
So, how's the, refresh my memory, how's the PD supplemental fund generated, how's it funded?
So the PD supplemental fund is generated by pre-trial supervision fees, and the fees by statute are split equally between probation and Public Defender Supplemental Fund.
So you're saying in the past, we've paid the $10,000 out of the PD supplemental fund?
Up until 2015, you paid it out of the general fund. The last two years, it's been paid out of the PD supplemental fund. The PD supplemental fund is not always going to be flush.
What is it now? What do we have in there now?
The balance right now is $212,000, $379.
That's reducing over time.
So...
And if you recall, I think three years ago, I took everything out of the general fund except for salaries and liability insurance, and put that in the PD supplemental fund.
Right, and that's where we have the $74,000. So I think that I would like that $10,000 to be in the PD supplemental fund, or not in the general fund. If you need it, we can address it then. I mean, we're trying to reduce the general fund here, so, I mean, it's not malice, but...
I don't have an objection to that.
Every little bit helps, yeah.
That's fine.
Thanks. Okay. So Vicki, can you make that change?
Yes. And then remove it down into the supplemental?
Yeah, to legal, yeah.
There we go.
If we, I mean, we know, Ken, if ever there's a...
Right.
But we're not going to like deny you the money.
Right, to make it happen, yeah. I appreciate that.
So that's my motion on that change. Second.
You got a first and second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
My motion was for that supplemental as well. I don't know if anybody had a problem with that. All right. Okay, awesome.
All right. Next up, we've got the Court Communications or Comm Corrections.
I don't know what that's doing there. There's community corrections, and that's, PAC is involved in that. I don't know what it is.
We are part of a grant through the Department of Justice for pre-trial release. It was first approved last year, and we received the grant again. It is normally under PAC, but we are participating in it.
So 9163 is grant-generated funds. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we've got the General Courts General Fund.
Can we do the other PD supplemental, the PD supplemental?
We did. My motion grabbed them both.
Both of them?
Yeah. The Court PD, yeah.
There's a Court PD.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Okay, General Courts, I think, is the same thing from last...
I see what you're saying. There's a second PD supplemental. We'll get that in a second. You're saying the Court PD supplemental, I didn't get to that one, I'm sorry, Joe.
Oh, okay, well, I don't know.
We'll jump in a second.
Ken's still here.
It's gonna be okay. I'll make a motion on the General Courts to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we've got the Court PD Supplemental, $1,200.
I'll make a motion to approve that as well. Frankly, it's not general fund.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we've got the Count User Fee Jury Fund, 2506. It's like, no increase there as well?
Yeah, is it the same? Yeah, then in that case, I'll make the motion to approve it. Second.
Okay, first and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we've got the, the Court Interpreter Grant Fund, 9108.
Is this a new grant, Judge?
I don't know what, the state usually goes on a July-through-June fiscal year, but I don't know that this is a new one. And Vicki, correct me if I'm wrong, they've changed the way that they provide that. They used to just give us a lump sum, and now they want the bills sent, and then they send it back.
Okay. I'm not aware of that, but that makes sense, they've done that in other grants as well?
So...
The reason I ask is that they show, on here, it looks like you've only expended $114, and I know that can't be right.
No.
But maybe this is something, maybe they're just a different line item. What's the story on this, Vicki, do you know?
I'm sorry, but there's an appropriation on your agenda for Monday, out of us. So he will be spending that.
Look, it's, we'll figure, it's grant money. I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Yeah, first and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we've got the Superior Court Number One General Fund.
I think everything is...
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we've got Superior, oh, have a good evening. All right, next up, we've got Superior Court Number Two General Fund.
So this one's down a little bit.
Yeah.
It's dating $10,000. Did the grant dry up? Is it something that...
I don't know.
It looks like it's $10,000 less, but it looks like it was a 2018 Indiana Guardianship Grant money.
Grant, yeah.
So is this a grant that just doesn't exist anymore?
I'm sorry.
I mean, it's grant money, we can fix it later.
Right. I'm sorry, we were dealing with some technical issues.
I'll make a motion on 183966.
Okay. We got a first and second. Any questions or comments?
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we've got Superior Court Number Three General Fund.
Did you have something else, Jeff?
Next week, my, I have a, if you guys seen it, I have a murder trial where I need supplemental funds. Is that Monday when I need to be here?
That's our regular council meeting, yes, on Monday.
I'll be here Monday.
It's 5:30, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, next up, the Superior Court Number Three General Fund. An increase of $500 we're looking at.
I'll make a motion.
We got a first, we got a second. Any questions or comments?
So your liability, you've allocated a little more for liability insurance?
Yes, obviously, expense one up.
And laundry and cleaning, gotta mention that.
Yeah, laundry and cleaning.
Yeah, I have a general question on that, for liability insurance, is there something that determines how much it should be for each court, and why, is there an explanation as to why all courts aren't the same for liability insurance?
Probably also has to do with how long you're on the bench.
Oh, okay.
And since I'm a baby.
You better cross it.
I say, I don't know, I think it's cheaper because you don't have stuff sitting out there from past years, and I don't know. But I'm sure it's got to do with the actuarial science of it all.
Makes sense to me, because I can't figure out insurance any other time.
Okay, we've got a first and second, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, or any more comments, sorry? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Awesome.
Motion carries, have a good evening.
Good night.
Next up, we've got Superior Court Number 4 General Fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
Stay the same, we got a first and second, are there any questions or comments?
Hey, Dave, how's it going, man?
Okay, good, how are you?
I'm still here.
You can keep, you can keep that book I let you to on Gettysburg, because I got another copy of it.
Okay, all right. I texted your wife, that's good, glad you got it back. That was great, man, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else have anything?
To extend my question, so liability insurance, zero, please.
I choose not to go with it. It's a choice each judge makes. The Attorney General, I found, enters their appearance and represents us without insurance in any case where we're sued. There are cases in which the Attorney General would probably not enter if it was a civil rights claim by a staff member or something like that, but it's like a personal decision with each, and I just found that it was each year I was paying it and never using it like any insurance, and so I decided to drop it.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
But that could end up someday.
It's great for now.
Any insurance, but it's a personal choice.
All right, my motion is to approve.
Second.
We got a first and second, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks again for the book, man, that's awesome.
Next up, we've got Superior Court Number 6, we've got, looking at no changes there, 139824 to 139824.
I'm gonna wait till the judge comes all the way up here. No, I'll make a motion to approve.
We got a first and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, man.
Um, next up, we got the Ford D Court General Fund.
Good evening.
Dean, how are you?
Good.
You don't need as much furniture, is that right?
Right.
Our furniture's good.
Furniture's good.
Awesome, I make a motion at 523860, no, it's not right. I'm looking at Circuit, sorry. I don't care about your furniture.
You don't?
I do, but not as much as Circuit. I make a motion at 243176. I'm wrong, 240176.
Second.
Hey, we got a first and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
We'll get to the furniture when we get to the Circuit Court.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you. Next up, we've got...
I'll make a motion on that non-general fund, 4D Center.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, see you later.
All right, next year.
Next up, we've got Circuit Court General Fund.
This is the one where we need less for furniture. We went from 17,000 to 200. She's got nice stuff now. They got massage chairs.
Nobody's holding down the broken chairs in the hallway anymore down there, so...
Oh, that was your thingy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion at 523868 if I haven't already.
Hey, we got a first and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next up, we got the Circuit Court Grants, PCADRF, make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments?
My motion is to include the family and child grant and the family court donation.
So does your second stand?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments on any of three of those? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you for lining up those Gettysburg books for me, too.
Yeah.
That was the most awesome trip.
It is, it's spiritual.
You and Dave, you guys are like Gettysburg gurus.
You're the guru. You're the prince of the country.
I know, but I'm not gonna share.
That was awesome.
All right, next up, we've got Juvenile Probation, excuse me.
And so, under our general fund, we are asking for an increase of 57,968. 49,468 of that is the mandated raises by the state. There are no other raises included in that. Additionally, there is 8,500 that we are asking to be placed in line item 3120, which is consultants, and that is for transitioning the department's, our Quest database system from an aging computer system that's currently hosted by our IT department, and placing that on a cloud-based system. And I can talk a little bit further as to why that's heading in that direction, if you'd like.
Yeah, so let me ask you a question, so we're gonna put, and this is, you know, you're putting 8,500 in consultants, you, I assume you don't have money available, your hourly fund, is that where, I mean, we budgeted 18,000, did you use all that, was that all used?
That is not presently being used.
So why couldn't, do you anticipate needing that, I mean, could we use the 8,500 out of that?
We, that's a possibility, we don't have it slated right now, but if one of the grants should go away, that was, that would be an area that we might be able to tap.
Why don't we, why don't we not add the consultant 8,500, you know, on its own, take it out of hourly, and if that happens, we can revisit this.
Sure, absolutely.
Just when I saw no expenditure, I thought that might be it.
So just reallocate 8,500 from the hourly to...
Yeah, and understand, we get it, if you, if you get into a situation that you need it, we'll, we'll address it.
We know where you're coming if that happens.
Okay, absolutely. No, I think that would work, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So with that change, I make the motion to approve at the new number, which is the same number, actually.
Okay, we've got a first, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next up, we got Juvenile Probation, Juvenile Probation Admin.
Admin, see, there are no changes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve that, and I'm gonna make also a motion to approve your supplemental, your probation supplemental. As I looked at that, there's not much going on there, that's of note.
Hey, we've got a first and second, are there any questions or comments?
No.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think, I'm sorry, I did have one change that I wanted to orally amend, if I could, on the probation user fee fund.
Sure.
I mean, you indicated all the increases there, the only change additionally is I was, the raise that I was thinking of, or the increase would be, take it from 7,750 to 10,721, and the only change is I am asking for 2,500 in salary increase, along with 471 in FIC and PERF for that increase, for a particular individual that we have on staff, that his job responsibilities are above and beyond any of our other officers at this time, and I'm happy to talk with you a little bit more in detail.
He's a drug court guy, he runs down to Indianapolis for JDAI, he's, he is...
He's a man of many hats.
Many hats, it's Anthony McDonald, you probably see him around town, it just, it just needs to happen.
Could I make a suggestion, since, what I like, you know, you guys can do, I mean, I'll follow the lead, but other than state mandated raises that we can give a strong finger wagging and tell Indianapolis, they shouldn't do that to us, other raises, we usually like to deal with those at the end, under, under special kind of requests?
Sure, and I thought perhaps the fact that it was coming out of the administrative fee, that self-generated funds, not general funds, that this is something we could get taken care of for him.
I think that, and I don't have a problem doing that, it's just that I think that we're gonna be encountering a lot of budgets over the next month that are not, you know, necessarily general fund generated budgets.
We're supposed to do it at budget time.
You are. You're just doing it the last... Well, it's gonna happen by the last, it's just not gonna happen by...
We're just moving all the salary increases to the end.
But it's good to have that and talk about it tonight.
Yeah, it was good information. Yeah, so, no, this is the time to talk about it.
Okay.
So you're, you're doing it at the right time.
Sure.
I just want to keep track of all of them for the end, you know, so that we can address those, and I don't care, this isn't gonna affect the bottom line of the general fund, so if you guys wanna leave it in there, fine, but I really like to have a list at the end and then just deal with them.
I think out of being fair to all the departments, it makes sense to just deal with it at the end.
And what date is that, I'm sorry?
Oh, October.
That's probably gonna be moved to, is that what you're...
16th currently, yes, it was moved to the 16th, that's the raises, raises in wages.
So as always, the commissioners were okay with it, do you have a back yet?
I haven't heard that on their date, but the other two dates.
So we're looking at that, that will probably be it.
And that 2,500 was not included in these numbers.
No, they're not.
No.
Not under there, no.
Gotcha.
So would you make the...
Go ahead, man.
Would you make a change, would you take that back down, that...
Well, we did...
She knows, but you've got a note to add it later, or to remember.
Yes, in your special request list, we added that.
Yeah, and just to, you know, I don't have a problem with it.
Fantastic.
Man, I just wanna keep track.
It is amazing amount of...
Yeah, I get that, and someone's actually already talked to me about it, so...
Yeah, we sat down and...
So I'm, I get, I did a little bit thinking on this already.
I appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Expand a little bit on the training and education, what you guys doing there, is that?
Well, we, we have conferences that we'll send officers to, we have a probation, it's called Popeye's Professional Probation Officer Association of Indiana, and they have an annual conference that covers a lot of the changes in statute and, you know, different programs, they just kinda assist probation officers and keep them current in their training. We've been able to send individuals to that in the past, but it's been three or four just based on the budget, so the increase of that would allow us to send more individuals to receive those trainings.
There's mandatory training requirement.
Right, no.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you guys have a great evening.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Hey, next up this evening, we have the Adult Probation General Fund.
Yes.
Good evening.
How you doing today?
Are your increases, the state, are the state mandated increases too?
So we've absorbed the state mandated increases in our user fees.
Okay.
The only increase that you're going to see is out of the general fund, that's the 4936.
What?
And basically, what we're looking at is, historically, we've absorbed the cost of all of the state mandated raises in our user fee budget. What we're starting to see now, though, is that we're bringing in less user fees, so the balance that we've had in the account is starting to be eaten away, we wanna make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position...
Vicki, can you tell us what's in that user fee, the supplemental now?
Yes.
Same, same situation.
I'm just curious.
So that's why we're looking at just that minimal amount. Okay, so the cash balance is 15240, 152,000.
What do we start the year with?
171,000, right, so?
No, I don't think so.
No.
75,791 rounded up.
Oh, do debts, I don't see any debt, is that the 324?
Unreceived revenue balance?
What's that 324 unreceived revenue balance, is that outstanding debt that's all the counting?
Which one, this one?
If we had put in an estimated revenue amount, that would be...
Yeah.
We don't estimate...
Oh, that's just...
Let's not, yes, let's not.
So, tell me, so what have we expended out of that year to date then?
So far?
Yeah.
248,235.
And the current balance is 171, or 152?
The cash balance in this fund is 15240.
So are things rolling out of this monthly, do we have big hits, or is it just monthly?
Salary.
All right, so what's the monthly juice on this?
15,000.
Yeah, I'm just guessing, I think you're right on.
Yeah. If you look at the September, yeah, yeah, okay, there you go. So if you look in that current month column, that includes tomorrow's payroll.
Oh, wow.
So about 25,000.
About 25,000, but how much is coming in?
We're staying ahead of it, 31,000, 7,000, 6,700.
So...
We go to...
So your thought is to remove, you wanna remove things out of the supplemental fund and push it into the general fund?
Correct, just that small amount, that 4936.
Where did you come up with 4936? I would think it'd be...
I know, it's a strange number, so essentially what it is, is we have a line item for a particular spot, a salary position, and every year, based on that salary schedule that we have, there are incremental jumps, and that is the cost of the incremental jump, to make sure that we get to the right dollar amount to keep somebody in that position. So I know it's a strange amount, but it's the incremental jump.
So I'm, I guess I'm not for that. It doesn't seem like your fund is in trouble, it seems like it's burning, yeah, it's sustaining itself.
And we might be in trouble later, but we can talk then.
It seems like it's, it's holding, it's holding the line.
Do we know where our starting balance is at the beginning of the year?
75,790.
Yeah, that didn't help you, I already asked that question.
So then, so we also, well, we draw salaries also from multiple different accounts, and that's what we're seeing the decreases then.
So you're gonna have to be, you're asking us to roll 47,000 in the general fund?
No, 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 4,000.
Or 4,000.
Pretty much 5,000.
967 plus, what am I missing in here?
It's not reflected in the sheet anyway.
Yeah, it's weird how this is.
It isn't.
Oh, on the page, yeah.
We're not saying...
The current versus the proposed, it's the same amount.
On the 144, you're not giving someone an increase that we're not seeing here. So what's, what's your proposal?
The average it is, 536 to 841.
Um, where do you see that?
But not on this Form 144.
No, not on the 144.
That's what's confusing.
So what was passed in '18 on this, 1049277, and the requested budget is 1054213, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm gonna make a motion at the 1049277.
Okay, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second, wait, which...
Can we have a second?
We're gonna stay...
I'm not quite sure, frankly.
We're gonna stay at the same budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna stay at the same budget.
Okay.
So we're taking out the 4936, is that the difference between the 1,049,000?
Do you have a suggestion, then, on where we find the 43, whatever it is?
4936?
From the same...
Same, keep taking it out.
Same funds you've been using, the user fee.
Keep reverting back to that fund?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Because you're doing good in it, from what we're seeing, the pattern showing, I mean, you started off 75,000 in the start of the year.
As long as we can keep collecting cash bonds, this'll be okay. You know, the state's trying to land all over us on cash bonds, and I'm just going, hey, you know, we're gonna do what we're gonna do, as long as we can do it.
Right.
And when cash bonds go away...
It's a different story.
We're screwed.
Well, and frankly, when the, if the cash bonds go away, that 4,000 is the least of our worries.
Right, right, but no, I'm, I'm just talking about in the future.
Right. Right.
Because some of you will be here in the future and some will not. It's your last meeting, isn't it?
Last budget.
Last in a budget, yep. You know, just understand it's cash bonds.
Right. What are they going to? I shouldn't ask that now. I'm sorry, that's off the-
No, no, no. They are allocated for multiple expenses in a case, including some part of probation fees on people. Restitution, the jail fee, you name it, it can go all over the place. Balance to an attorney, whatever.
Wow. But what you're seeing now in the pretrial release program that we're currently a pilot for, you were seeing where defendants are being released without having to post that cash bond. So that money that's previously been available to take for these types of fees is no longer available. So now you're being the bill collector and having to collect these fees from the individual.
So in the future, just understand that the 49, whatever it is, I'll not remember that number as long as I live, you know, we can put that in someplace, and we can do that. We just need to figure out, Vicky, where she should put it, and in the future, understand-
We're gonna have it.
We have a couple conversations.
Last year, we had this conversation too, and we know it's a potential white elephant out there.
Right.
And we're hoping it stays out there.
Stop bringing us up.
But if it doesn't stay out there, I mean, if there comes a time that we have to address this, we will. What else would we do?
You know, in the early release, now you guys are talking about, do you know how many people that's gonna be roughly? Do you know how many dollars that's gonna amount to?
Dollars, I don't know. I don't know what the cost is for helping somebody in the jail on a daily basis. We're averaging, I'd say about 275 people at any given time on the program. So it's 275 people that have it posted cash bonds. That number obviously goes up and down. If cases are postponed, the number goes down. When people come to the program, they're not allowed.
Well, since we're piloting this, we're gonna see a lot more of that activity though.
We will.
But not her.
I think what she's saying is the sheriff owes us some money back. They don't have as many people in jail to pay for now.
I'm just thinking that she's, this year, this year itself is gonna be reflected.
It's wishful thinking, yeah.
I think about a year ago or so, when we actually had the clerk calculating the cash bonds for us and how they were paid out, you know, for the whole year, it was about a million bucks.
Yeah, it's a huge number. It's a huge number. We're hoping that we don't have to address, but as I says, 4,000 is nothing compared to what we're gonna have to deal with.
49 something.
I don't remember that. 4936.
So my motion is that. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Now, Vicky, did you move that 49 something or other?
4936, and I won't forget it now either.
Because she's gonna move that.
She's gonna remember it tonight.
So, right.
So you're 49-
We're gonna, we will need that money. Can we move that in?
That's what I just asked.
Yeah, let me finish up.
Where can we put it?
Yeah, well, we have to analyze where's the best place here. How much are we talking about here?
4936.
So I'm gonna guess probably out of the probation supplemental because-
That's exactly where, that's not even a guess. That's where it needs to go.
Right, yeah. The next couple of counts that we're gonna talk about are the numbers.
So we'll add the 4,936 to that line item in Fund 2101.
Yeah, got it. All right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Do you want to roll? Next up, we've got adult or probation admin. I'm gonna make a motion to approve that.
So reduction, we got a first?
A second?
So my question is, so what exactly did we change to, what's happened with that fund?
So, so I feel like I've become a regular sitting before you guys. I've been here for the past couple of meetings. What's been happening is we've had some change in staff. So we've had senior, more senior or seasoned employees that are paid at a higher rate that are leaving, and we're filling those spots with less seasoned people that we can pay a little less to. So we've seen some savings in that, and that's how we've been able to absorb the raises going into next year is because of the savings that we've had.
Vicky, scroll up to what we're talking about here, would you? All right. Okay, that's kind of what I thought. I answered my question. My motion stands.
Okay.
Anyone else have any further questions? Did we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Adult probation supplemental. Vicky, did you have any number in there? 4936?
Yes.
Yep, so their number's 418981? Is that what it is?
Yes.
So I will make a motion at 418981.
Yep, good.
We got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Next up, we got adult probation pretrial, 2103.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
A reduction.
Second.
First and second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Adult probation CC pretrial, 9164. Got an increase of 8,483.
So these are grant dollars?
Okay. And the increase is to pay for?
It's paying for salaries, so again, it's absorbing some of those raises that I was talking about. We had an additional $20,000 in salaries come in with this grant, so that's how we were able to save some money in some of the other supplemental accounts.
So the answer is probably yes, but so the increases that you're absorbing with this fund, are these some of the, are they the mandated raises then?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve it, 12843.
First and second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Ayes have it.
And last this evening, we got the extension office general fund.
We're not here.
Extension here?
I don't.
They may not be here. Anita talked to me-
You guys have a good evening.
Tuesday night. She said that what she really needs in this-
4136.
49.
49.
What she really needs is the contract to do, to use it go up 2,000.
I, I'm not going to vote on it without her here.
Okay.
I just didn't know she was gonna say.
Yeah, let's put her some other day, maybe.
Sure.
Yeah. Julie, when you check with her?
She's not gonna be here next week either.
Well, then I guess she better find a day that works for sending her up.
She had a representative somewhere or somewhere else.
Actually, she said someone else was gonna be here, but they're not.
Yeah, tell her to send someone, knows her budget.
We changed it for Monday.
She's still not here, then. We may have to change for a view. Yeah. But not Monday. We can't add her to Monday. Monday's a very busy day.
She was here, you said?
Yeah, she was. I found out she was here a little while.
All right, well, we'll just reset the front of the day, huh? What do you think, dude?
Sounds good. All right, anyone have anything further?
Well, this has been a real stitch.
Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna make that motion.
You got a first, you got a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good job. Awesome.
You sort of cut 23,57.
This is the easy one.
436.
Boy, this is the easy one. Yeah, absolutely. And you're probably the only-
Very good.
We're on a roll here.
They're gonna cut, they will, it'll come out even if we, uh, do the extension.
Andy.
I'm gonna use the restroom real quick and then I-
Betty, Betty, something else.
You did.
Oh, man. I was gonna give a speech on comp time too, man.
Well, now you can.
Same number of people would be listening.
I gotta go.
I'll listen.
I mean, some of these, I mean, I know the commissioners addressed this a little bit at their meeting. Some of these comp time numbers are just out of this orbit, much less out of this world. And I think that as the elected officials come in front of us, if they're, if they're sitting with employees that have 200, 300, 400, got to bid 500, and I know of one, the two, two, have two over 500s?
Yes.
So we're going-
Can I have that information available that we can talk about?
Then as the elected official comes in front of us, we're gonna want information on comp time, and they can tell us how they intend to address this, and what cuts they want to make in their budget to fund it, if their proposal is to pay their employees out.
Vicky, does anything to do with the 35 hour work week?
What? I'm willing to wait a few more here if you want to do an extension.
I'm here, I'm here.
I am so sorry.
Andy.
So I think this is a, if someone has 500 and some hours of comp time, someone's been asleep at the wheel, and the elected official has to answer to us how that happened, and how they intend to fix it, and how they intend to pay for it.
Hey, I'm really good at this.
Hey, man.
Oh, here's your luck, kid.
Oh, wait, I'm underdog.
I am so sorry.
I was meaning that to work.
A motion to deny.
I understand the hundred percent.
Me call that work, yeah.
I was trying to tell him what you said. I apologize. I didn't realize the speed that you would move through.
Andy is the master chairman, man. What are you talking about? I've been here this long.
I underestimated the power of the board here. Okay.
Exactly.
However, I do feel like I have a lot of power, so I'm definitely not saying anymore.
I like that approach, but you're buttering yourself.
Well, they haven't joined us this evening. We look like we're looking at a $7,000 increase?
Yes. I tried to prioritize this so that if I was here, the first budget reading, so I understand that you don't like, feel like you have to make some cuts, so I wanted to let you know the things that were most important to me.
Right.
So, so your hourly is going up. Can you tell me what's going on there?
So we had some, a grant program for 4H, and it paid for a part-time assistant that would go around and do some STEM types of programs. And so our outreach was for the Portage area especially. She did a great job, and we would like to continue with that, but we really don't have anyplace else to go with that. We have, we have started somebody on county part-time money. At the same time, we are needing more nutrition education.
How much is, how much of their hourly have they expended so far, you said? About 20,000?
Right, right. Almost 21,000.
And we budgeted 27.
Yeah, at the rate we're going, we feel like we'll be short just a little bit. We can cut back on hours and things, and December's slow anyway, and so is November, but if it's possible, we would appreciate it. We're very excited about our STEM programs. I don't know if you've heard about them, but we have our program assistants sort of going out with like those printer pens and creating different statues and things, and going to the libraries and working with groups there, and going to the Y and working with groups there. We have little toothbrushes that they can make, move.
You didn't bring us an example, that's.
We would love to have you come up and show us our tools.
So you're, I'm not even going to comment on that. All that stuff.
I was just like, oh, yeah, but that's-
No way, no way, I'm not gonna comment on that.
I've had enough trouble already. I'm pretty quiet.
So it looks like maybe on the travel, you've expended about 4,500 this year so far.
Right.
Now, you did expend it all in '17, so I guess my question is, you're not gonna need all 75, or 7,500 of travel?
Okay, so currently, we have a position open. We are down one educator right now.
Yes.
We're going to hire somebody in October. We have interviews on October the 4th. So depending upon the activities that they have, I have to say, though, that our travel hasn't increased over the years because we're doing more trainings online, and so we're doing more meeting via the computer than what we have in the past, so.
I mean, can we, instead of 7,500, can we take the travel down to like 6,500 or something to pick up some of your hourly?
Um, we could try it and see how we go.
Yeah.
One of our program assistants, we're paying her out of that travel money also.
Why don't we give a shot at 6,500? Eat up some of that cost. Now, I gotta tell you, you're asking for a raise for the office manager. And you weren't here when we talked earlier, but we were talking about, we're not addressing raises tonight per se. We're gonna put them on a list of requests in particular. Is there a reason why you want your office, is there something going on, or is it just time for a raise?
Well, she's been there for over 25 years, and she's fairly low. She makes 37,800. And so she, I'm telling you, she is spot on perfect, and if you've ever had your children show up at the fair and not be enrolled or something, she is excellent at making sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted so that we don't have mishaps. So she is very valuable.
So I would like to suggest that we don't put that in the budget we approved tonight, but instead put it on the list of the raises that we're going to attack. And right now, what was that date, Andy?
Oh, that's October 16. Will be our raises waiting.
And we'll just address it on the 16th.
Five thirty.
The only thing you have, the only thing you have there, Neta, is you have that 1,700, and you've never touched all of that. Looks like in any of the budgets.
1700.
Maintenance.
In maintenance? Okay, so here's the, here's the thing. Big issue, our copier came from the council office four years ago. We didn't realize that. Sharon was here, and she made all the copiers.
Well, maybe we'll give you this old one, and we'll get ourselves another.
Okay, well, if it copies more than one at a time, right now, sometimes it'll go on the fritz, and it will copy one page. You have to turn it off, turn it back on to get another copy.
Can't you use our in-house printing if you needed it right away?
If we needed something big and needed something right away.
Why are you guys laughing? Is it that bad?
Just right now, it's down to three months, three weeks.
Let me ask you too.
So she had a lot of good questions.
And also, she said, we had talked earlier, that she was gonna come to the next council meeting and request appropriation for the copier, because we need to replace it as quickly as possible.
Would that come out of your maintenance agreements, mine?
So our maintenance agreement will go up a little bit.
So right now, you've expended 751 in '17. You've expended about 606 so far this year. So it sounds like-
We did have, honestly, we did have extra in that account, and that's where we, if we needed to transfer over to dues and subscriptions or anything, we were kind of taking out of that a little bit out of travel sometimes. But anyway, back to the copier though, I wanted to warn you that I, for, we had a staff turnover in our support staff, so Laura's still there, and we have a new person coming in, but we have $5,300 that we won't use in salaries. So we want to transfer that to equipment, and then I'll have to ask for, I was gonna ask for an additional for the makeup of the 4,700 because we'll be able to pay for the copy machine.
So the only addition is the hourly because of you're trying to keep the STEM person there.
With STEM and our nutrition program.
What's the contractual services increase? Is that?
The contractual services, that is.
Oh, that's Purdue?
Yeah, that's Purdue.
Thank you.
And so those are costs related to benefits and salary and company.
So right now, you're, we're down to about 258, 288, which is up from the 252, 234. So part of that is your hourly, part of it is a little increase to your dues and subscriptions?
Yes. So, you know, we had that extra in our, in our maintenance, and so we've been using that little extra to make up for any shortfall in some of the others. And so that's where we got the extra for the dues. So we were just trying to plan ahead and get that straight, you know, more.
So if we purchased the new copier this year, could we knock that maintenance agreement down to 1,000? Because you still have about three or $400 buffer, and the dues and subscriptions,